So it's 6:07 and I called this board meeting, the New Britain Board of Education to order. And let's start with the pledge of allegiance. And you're going to leave us.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Merrill Kay.
Here.
Mr. Nicholas Murray.
Here.
Dr. Violet, Human Rights Center.
Here.
Ms. Monica Dawkins.
Present.
Mr. Anthony Kane.
Here.
Ms. Diane Laye.
Here.
Ms. Annie Parker. Ms. Diana Reyes.
Here.
Ms. Nancy Rodriguez.
Here.
And Ms. Gail Sanders-Palmer.
Here.
And now let's take a moment of meditation. Okay, do we have anybody signed up for public participation?
Now, is anyone in the room?
Phone numbers usually show at the top, so.
There's them, what I see.
And that would be the way that they're connecting as opposed to getting it to Google.
Okay, so seeing nobody on the phone for public participation, closed public participation, go right to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, good evening. It's nice to see all of you here, even if we are somewhat masked. Can you hear me? Okay. All right, it's going to be a little bit of a longer than usual superintendent report, but I want it to be thorough. I'm going to start with a report out on operations in our facilities. Two documents, one you can see on the screen, and I'll go over that Excel sheet in a moment. But one thing that you have in your side file tonight is the guidance for school systems for the operation of central and non-central ventilation systems. And with it you see handwritten notes. I'm sorry, this was a late hour, that we wanted to be sure that we were thorough. But you can see that in all instances, we are, it's a yes, right? It's a yes that we understand what we need to do to be prepared to reopen. What I've done here on the Excel sheet is to give you a practical overview of where we are right now with getting all of those ventilation systems up and running. So the first, and I tried to break them out into four main categories: exhaust fans, rooftop units, air handlers, filters, and that's going down, you can see that going down the column, and filters, and emergency management systems. That's, those are our basic big bucket categories. Our exhaust fans, as ESC, who is one of our contractors, has gone through all of our buildings, there are multiple exhaust fans that are not currently in operation. And it's three main areas where there's a breakdown. The first is belts, the second would be voltage, and the third would be around motors. So what ESC and the Board of Education, primarily the maintenance department have done, and they will get this list to me by the end of the day tomorrow, is between our maintenance and ESC, their staff, they will go through every exhaust fan in the district, replace the belt if needed, repair the motor if needed, and our electricians along with some of ESC's electricians will be correcting the voltage. I'm telling all of this to you because we are scheduled to reopen for students on September 3rd, and all of this is contingent upon getting all of this work done. It isn't that we haven't been doing things to this point, but there's just so much, because our buildings are older, our exhaust fans for multiple years have not been functioning. So I want you to know that not all of them, but some have been broken and not repaired. It's my responsibility to ensure that our exhaust fans are up, running, and working. So I can check, yes, we are on it, but until all of the work is done. And so I'm telling you this tonight in the event I might have to say to you next week that we might have to postpone the opening until all of these things have been checked off. So these are the granular details to this report or checklist that the state provided to us. So our action plan for that is maintenance and ESC will meet tomorrow morning. They already have an idea, they know all the ones that are not functioning right now, and they will be providing the list to our maintenance department. Our electricians and our plumbers are currently working on ensuring that all of the hand dryers are disconnected, that all of the portable faucets that we bought or purchased to put on the water fountains are all being installed. So there was just so many things to this plan, but I wanted to give you a heads up, that if we have to postpone or delay opening, it's because we've been working since June on this, but there is just a lot of work to be done. The second is our rooftop units. We have been, we've been told that these are in, that we can order them and we will get them delivered. And I'm talking about the REMI HALO ionized hydro peroxide output units for each building. We are doing this on a rooftop unit, you'll see why in a little bit. The state, all right, Kevin Deon, be ready to talk technical if I can't get this, but there are different size filters. I'm going to give it to you in layman's terms. The state in one of their documents recommended that we use a MERV 13 filter, which is a thicker filter. The problem with that is we have older systems, and if we put a thick filter like that in, and we have run tests in six of our buildings on this, it actually becomes a dam and stops the flow of air because it's such a thick filter. We can successfully use MERV 8 filters. That's what many of our buildings, even our newer buildings, were designed for, is a MERV 8 filter. So in an effort to mitigate or to bring up the level of purification, we are going with these units on the rooftop for the REMI HALO ionized hydro peroxide outputs. We're doing that in addition to our filters being sprayed with a TAC or a glue. It's safe, non-toxic, and what it does is it provides almost like a sticky layer to the filter to catch additional droplets. So because we can't use a MERV 14, because our systems can't handle it, we're looking to put these, I've got to look again, I'm just going to call them the REMI HALOs, on our rooftop units in addition to a spray TAC on our MERV 8 filters.
Who uses those today, or is that something new? The REMI HALO ionized?
Yeah.
I'm sure it's new, it's new as term, I don't think it's new, but I think it's been much more advertised. We do have medical clearance to use this. There are some products out there that are, students with asthma or staff with asthma are sensitive to, this is not one of them. This has been approved. Jackie Matty has reviewed this and given the blessing, and it is, it is safe for people with asthma. So below where you see the air handlers, I put in, our problem is we can't use MERV 13, so we'll need to enhance the MERV 8s, and that's what I just described to you now. And our action plan is to put the REMI HALOs, ESC will determine the number of units per building. We've been assured, and I've been assured many times this summer, that the supplies will be delivered on time. But again, we're relying on outside providers or suppliers to supply the materials in real time. In the event that that doesn't come in, that might delay the start, the school dates start as well. And when we go down to filters, like I just stated, our, our problem is our current system can't handle the MERV 13 filter without a decreased airflow. And our action plan for that is to order that spray TAC. ESC will come in, it's very simple to apply onto our MERV 8 filters, it's something that, that's not a new product. Do you have more questions on that, Gil?
No. So that spray TAC is something different than the HALO ionized hydro peroxide?
That's correct.
That's correct. Do we use that spray TAC today at all?
We do not use the spray TAC today.
But Fred Wish from ESC's, it's a common product, we have not used that. If you need more information on that though?
I'm going to Google it.
I mean, but I can have, maybe Kevin would know as well. Do you mind if I call on people just because you can't see? Are you good with that, Merrill? Tony?
Question on the HALO units?
Yeah.
It says each building, I'm just, is that only the areas of the building that currently have air handling system?
That's correct.
So only where air handling systems are?
That's correct.
Understood, thanks.
Yep. They're small little units, they're UV lights, they're small, they're not large, they're easy to install, it doesn't require a lot of hardware or whatever. Kevin? Deon?
Yes.
Oh, it's like, God, stop talking. Okay, can you explain a little bit the installation of the REMI HALOs?
Yeah, they're actually a fairly easy installation, actually goes against the ductwork of the unit. But it depends on how many square footage and how much flow you have, really dictates how many you purchase. So if a two-inch hole that's spread to the side of the duct and then a low voltage, which is what is the controller, is then drawn to a main control board that we can control with our building management system, or be able to basically get low voltage into the closer power supply. So it's a very easy system to maintain, it's a small sized two-inch hole into the ductwork, and as superintendent said, leaving the hole is readily available, so we will be looking at acquiring most of those in the district.
Can you explain what, what that system does?
Kevin, can you explain what the system does?
Yeah, smaller, just as close to, it has a little UV light in it, it will kill the virus. It also has an ionizer, or not an ionizer, but a hydrogen peroxide generator. As the virus goes through, the air goes through, it will, it will kill the virus that then flows through in the air. So it's a two-fold type of system.
Kevin, can you talk a little bit about the MERV 13 versus the MERV 8?
Yeah, so MERV 8 is what a lot of the older standard systems, and everybody uses MERV 8. Basically, MERV, for those that don't know, is Minimum Efficiency Reporting Level. And what that is, that's just, the higher you go, the more it becomes more like a hepa. So MERV 13 and higher, will, they say, will, the reports with these sizes, the viruses will start to trap viruses. Now, it's not mere purification, it just lowers the amount of virus in the air. It's not, it won't take every virus out. The problem is that you put in, think about your own fan, where you could put a sheet in front of the fan, then you could put a blanket in front of the fan, definitely see the difference in your flow. That's the same with these systems. Most of them are designed for MERV 8, they're supposed to allow more airflow. So you have a decrease in your chief of heat per liter C F balance, and you'll see a pressure increase on one side or the other if you go with too high. What that does is puts strain on your HVAC system, and then you could lose, you could have other failures. You won't have airflow in the building that requires balancing, then you could also put strain on the motors and then have failures with no airflow, with a motor or a belt for his job. So most systems are designed for MERV 8, mainly for cost and with the systems are, the older systems. You, MERV 8 is what our systems are rated for. We tried MERV 13, we saw a really high increase in our pressures in our system, then we also saw a marked decrease in our C F balance. So most of the research we're reading is saying that the virus pretty floating really isn't that common to get that far. Usually it's more of an aerosol mucus, which is a larger particle. And a larger particle with, with MERV 8 spray TAC, you have a better rate of pulling some more of the virus and mucus out of the air, which becomes aerosol. That being said, the state requirement is that we try and look at a MERV 13, but it's not required that we put a MERV 13, it's just recommended. And unfortunately, our systems due to the age of our buildings, the MERV 13 just isn't an option at the moment.
Kevin, can you also, I don't think it's unique to New Britain, I want to point that out, that I would imagine.
I've worked in other districts, and I've worked for private sector, MERV standard control board. And I also know, I was talking with our vendor, and they have people who own buildings, office buildings, and a lot of office buildings that we heard MERV 13, started putting them in their systems. And what they are doing now is pulling them out and putting the MERV 8s back in because what they want us doing is causing stack in the building. And if you, it's worse to have stack in the air, no fresh air flowing in. So they're actually reverting, a lot of, a lot of systems won't handle the MERV 13, it's not just indicative of the work.
Other questions for Kevin? So our purpose of doing this tonight was to keep you informed on the status of completion toward these goals that the state has set out around making sure that our airflow, ventilation, clean air is, we are on track right now, but I will keep you posted as the days go on. There's only 24 hours in a day, and people are working really hard right now to make sure this happens. So, so that's the first part. If we're good, I'm going to move beyond operations and go to the next area. Thank you, Kevin. I'm going to ask Jeff Prokop to come on now and talk a little bit about an update on Wi-Fi for the families that are in need.
Good evening, everyone. Yep, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. So to be as brief as possible, knowing the length of all the updates involved. So we have made progress with Comcast, we just got word back at 5:45 today that everything is moving forward. So we should see, I'm presuming, within a week codes in hand for that program to start working with our families. Matt Kanata has been giving me updates as to the families reporting without internet, and we are looking in good shape in terms of that.
That's good news. And we'll update you again next week, because I'm so tired of people promising. But that's, that's probably really good news for today. Thank you, Jeff. And Sandra, can you report out on daycare for both, yeah, just the daycare for our students?
Yes, good evening, everyone. We have been working with the Y and YW as our providers to ensure that we can provide supervised remote learning days for our families in New Britain. And we are working so that, we have a flyer that's going out roughly today, it was a, it was a strong draft that the YW is putting out for our families today, where families need to sign up for a whole week, the opposite of their homework, the days that they are not face-to-face, or they can sign up for before and after school programming. We are scheduling it and working so that all of those options will be provided in our school cafeteria, so that they would also be there on heat days.
And I'm just going to just jump in quickly. In the event that we have extreme weather like we typically do in September, the thought of wearing a mask for a teacher or a student for seven days in buildings that are not air-conditioned is not healthy. So on those days where there, where we call a heat day, now, mind you, as small as air condition throughout, that wouldn't impact them. Or the buildings where there is air conditioning, that won't impact them. But for those buildings like Homes in Jefferson, the ones who have not been renovated, to have kids upstairs on the second floor in 95-degree heat and this is just not a way to learn, it's just not. So we will be providing daycare to those families who have already signed up, because our cafeterias, all of our elementary cafeterias are air-conditioned. And so that would be the alternative for, for them. Thank you. Thank you, Sandra. And you'll see the flyer should be coming out, we'll probably post it on our Facebook page by maybe tonight, or tomorrow, tomorrow, for our families. And if I can have, actually, Mary Ellen, can you jump in and give a staffing update?
I sure can. Hi, everyone. Staffing is, like overall staffing, you know, minus any pandemic, we are actually in a fairly good place. We have almost all of our certified staff for the opening of school, with just a few certified positions that are in process. So we feel, we feel good about that. You know, we had some other hurdles in regards to having people come in and staggered groups with appointments, with as least contact as possible. So the talent department has done a great job this summer with retooling so that we got people in and, and ready to go, the one we start school. In regards to leave, we reached out to our staff immediately to see if anybody within our employee cadre needed to take leave as it relates to FMLA+ or Epsilon, which are the expanded leave opportunities for those who would qualify. We reviewed all those within our office and then vetted them through with our attorneys. And at this point, we have a very low number of folks that fall within that category, approximately less than 10 staff members that would fall into medical leave. So we are processing those folks and getting substitutes in place to be prepared. And we're also looking at securing daily substitutes for each one of our buildings. So we're upwards, we're looking for upwards of 55 at this point, we're working with Kelly Services, excuse me, which is our, our vendor for substitutes, as many of you know. They're working hard and we're working in conjunction with them, so we're itching close to that 55 as we get closer to the school year. And again, those are the folks who would push in and substitute primarily our certified staff, that's what Kelly Services does. And then in regards to making sure that we're aligned with our reopening plan that was presented and submitted to the state, as well as the public, we want to make sure our isolation rooms, as they're defined, have folks that are in those rooms that are qualified and have some medical training. So we're working with Delta T, one of our other providers, to have CNAs, Certified Nursing Assistance, in those building, excuse me, in those buildings. And we are very close to, also itching to that 17 number, we have approximately 10 to 11 as of today for secured CNAs. So that is our, our plan for staffing. We do also, just as a side note, to piggyback off of our support for our families that are looking for childcare, as Superintendent and Sandra Stanford mentioned, we are looking to also provide opportunities for any of our remaining staff who may be challenged in finding their own daycare opportunities. So we hope to be able to message to our staff if there are any local providers that also have some slots that may be available to them. But also, those folks are challenged, we are working with them for some possible leave or intermittent leave. But again, those numbers are small, they're manageable for the district. So we're, we feel confident in saying it won't be impactful, but also saying that, you know, each one of our employees matters. So we're, we're making sure that we spend time having conversations with each of them, especially those who are nervous or have complicated return needs. So we want to make sure we're addressing them. So that's the update for staffing.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. And I'm going to take a couple of minutes, and if Wanda, Licuar, and Mark Spalding could come on together to speak to our ELs and our students with IEPs.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, everyone, how are you? Why, do you want to go first?
Sure. I mean, we have the report together, so I can go anyway. We decided that we were going to offer for the ELs, the special ed inclusion students, for 10 four days per week. The special ed department and I use the same criteria of looking at the students that were engaged 20 days or less, less. And also for the ELs, we looked at those students that had been in the country for 30 months or less. And we did K through 12. At the elementary level, I have 659 students that meet that criteria, which are ELs with 30 months or under, or that were, were engaged 20 or less times.
And with the spec, what, sorry.
Go ahead, Mark.
So with special education as well. So as you know, we had about 91% of our students who did access the virtual learning environment during the closure, which went from March, the middle of March until school ended in June. But we had, again, we had 469 students, I believe, who, again, as Wanda mentioned, had under 20 access that learning, under 20 times. And many students, because of different reasons, were not able to access at all. And so again, we came up with criteria, these for inclusion students who will, who we believe would be approved for them to have the option of going for the four days. And so we've identified those students in all of our buildings, and that information will share with the building leaders today. And also, we have, I think, I'll check, 482 students who are in programs such as our British Programs, our Pathways, NBTC, children who are in sub-attend classrooms, those students will also be offered, due to disability, of, of the option of attending school four days a week. So we have almost 1,000 students with special needs. Of course, 40% of our total population of special children in the district will be given the option of going four days per week at this time.
And K through 12, we have a total of 963 students that will be offered that opportunity as well, ELs.
Thank you. Any questions on that?
And you just said they've identified students that can come in four days a week.
Right, it's their option. If a parent chooses not to do it, we respect that, but they do have the option of coming in the full four days. And remember, learning is continuous. It's not like we're teaching Monday, Tuesday, and then teaching the same thing Thursday, Friday. It's continuous education, so we're giving them the four-day option. If they choose to do three days, they can do three, no different than what we're saying to all of our families. But we, we are encouraging them strongly to come in because we feel they're more successful when they're in the building. Questions?
If there's a student who's not identified currently as needing four days, who might have special needs, et cetera, I assume this is an accommodation they could potentially ask for through PPT or some other?
Mark, did you hear that?
Yes, I did. And I anticipate receiving some of those. And, you know, I guess that would be a PPT discussion, correct?
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to pay, I mean, the state, I'm going to, the state, the state is urging, you know, that all special needs students are in buildings as much as possible. Again, we're trying to balance this with the, with students' needs and also health and safety.
Right, and that.
We're, you know, we're really looking at our, our most neediest children at this time. So if we can expand that, we will.
We have to assume though, that every cohort day, 50% are coming to the party, right? And I can't, because the parents have the right on that Monday, Tuesday. And so it's kind of, it's hard to plan for a party when you don't know exactly how many folks are coming. And that's what we, that's what we're, we're trying not to exceed, make the numbers too large for our ELs and our students with special needs, because we're anticipating 50% are coming to the party. And they're a part of that 50% anyway, in one cohort, not the other.
Is there, are there any other distance resources, and what do those look like, that are being provided to ELs and special education students that would support them if they're in that position? So maybe somebody missed a lot of the pivotal days, and I understand the purpose of this is that they're more successful in person, but if that student has a health concern or whatever, and is not going to come, but obviously needs some sort of intervention, what will that look like?
So Wanda and Laura, do you want to take that? Wanda, did you hear the question?
I did not hear the question.
Okay, so I'll just repeat it to you. I don't know why I'm screaming here, there's no microphone, but.
Because it makes sense.
I don't know where to look. So Dr. Sims was stating, in the event that So Dr. Sims was stating, in the event that the student who could possibly have four days but can't because of health reasons or whatever, or the parent just chooses that they want to have them at home, what digital or what online supports do we have for our EL students outside of the core to support our ELs? And then the same for our students with special needs, Mark?
Well, in addition to the vast variety of resources that we have now, we're using, and this is a communication, part of the communication tomorrow with the building admins, to communicate with the ESL teachers and the native language support in their communication with the families if they see the need or parents speak of the need for any student to either come into the school more or for us to reach out and provide additional resources. That is going to be an ongoing conversation, just as we had these last few months during the school year, where we were continually reaching out to the families and they were reaching out to us and we were trying new things. And that is part of the job of the ESL teacher, along with the native language support, of course, the mainstream teacher in collaboration with us at Central Office.
In addition, Wanda, I want to speak, I'm not going to get the number right, but I do know that of all of our paraeducators, we do have 40 that are bilingual. And so knowing that 50% of our students were going to be in building and that we were including many of our inclusion, we're looking to shift some of our paraeducators who are bilingual to support our Ls too during this time. And so Donna Swaby and Wanda are working together to look at providing additional resources. And you have to be careful there, too, because everyone has a need. But we find sometimes it's very difficult to get the paraeducators who are proficient in maybe Arabic, you know, well, and Spanish, too. But we have a lot, we know we have 40 that we are going to, and the other thing is, we are going to be training them in SIAP as well. That's going to be part of the paraeducators' training, all paraeducators. Mark, did you want to speak to, and Laura?
Yeah.
Can Laura just speak for a second about the digital platforms? Because I think maybe that's what she was going for. Laura?
Yes. You can read my mind now, which is scary.
I don't mind.
Scary place to be. We did, we were very mindful of our population when we were looking at the platforms that we might need. And so, so we did, when we purchased BrainPop, for example, you know, we did, we did purchase the BrainPop ELL and the Spanish, so the exact same resources available in Spanish. As you know, with Nuzella, you approved all of these purchases, and so you sort of see them coming through. But Nuzella, with the, with the very different reading, reading levels for the different articles to make them accessible for different people. IREDDI certainly is going to be our primary intervention tool, you know, with multiple avenues to approach so that after students take the diagnostic, they will have a learning path, but that learning path can be influenced by teachers who are seeing the need for more support in particular areas, et cetera, as well. So, so we did, we did keep that in mind as we were, as we were looking for how we're going to retool instruction this summer.
Thank you, Laura.
And for me, you know, you know, our special education teachers are, you know, following this platform and they're being trained in it. That's the expectation. And we're going to be working closely with our parents to ensure that they have an understanding of the technology, because they're, you know, they're partners in this and it's really imperative. So we're going to do the trainings with them. And also, we're anticipating how we're going to be assisting families, for whatever reason, who have difficulty supporting their child at home. So, you know, we have some instances where, you know, we have some folks that are impacted themselves and the child has to stay home. So how do you, how do you provide that instruction in the virtual environment when the parent is really unable to help the child at home to access the virtual environment? So we're working on that. We're actually having a meeting on that, a DICE meeting tomorrow, because I anticipate some of those. And so we're trying to look at, you know, we're trying to anticipate as many bumps in the road as we're going to might incur and how we're going to deal with that. So, and again, you know, we'll go to PPT, but again, the state, we're rolling out the recommendations and the guidance from the state next week. But the state is, you know, mandating that we follow the IEP with veli even in a home environment, and that's my expectation. I'll be working with staff to ensure that occurs.
Any other questions? Nancy?
Yeah, so what happens with families that have children, you know, ELL and special ed, but they're not also communicating with the schools? They're not staying in touch. They're just saying, I'm not sending my kids back because, you know, they're worried. But then, at the same time, the schools don't know that they're not doing that and they're not staying connected. Now what happens with that child?
Okay, so I'm going to, I'll answer that, Nancy. And so the question was, those families who might have students who are EL or identified students with special needs, if they just basically say, we're not connecting, we're not doing it, we're just not going to do it. So that would be no different than if we were at brick and mortar every day, right? All of us, so two things. Attendance must be taken every day. Attendance equals brick and mortar, kids show up, or kids click on homeroom or they come at, you know, during the day. There's a presence of that student. If there's not a presence of that student, brick and mortar or online, we already have interventions in place. And so our attendance teams will be meeting weekly like they would during the school year, and we would follow a similar protocol, including home visits to the families. So that's, I mean, because they're virtual or remote, doesn't mean that we're still not, they're in our catchment and that we will make sure that we do all that we always do to help our families through this and how we can get them to reengage. Any other questions? So my last piece, it's quickly. Matt, if you could report out on the parent survey, the results of the surveys?
Yeah, we've been, we've had the survey out for about two weeks now. We've had a decent response. We've got about 50%, just over 50% return from all families throughout the district. And as of this morning, the results are, so obviously, as Superintendent Sarah said, students can come at any time they want between remote and hybrid based within their cohorts. But 48.9% said they will be doing 100% remote learning. 49% said they'll be doing the hybrid model. And 2% said they will be doing straight homeschooling withdrawing from CSDMB. In regard to transportation, 28% said they need transportation to school. 26% needs transportation after school to home. And 46% do not need transportation. For childcare, we have 5% who need care before school, 5% who need care during school, 10% who need care after school, and then 80% do not need care. And then our last question was regard to Wi-Fi. They have access to it in their homes. 96% have Wi-Fi access, 4% do not. So we started filtering the data to the principals today and administrators, and we'll finish that up this week so they can continue scheduling for the start of the school year.
Nicola, Nancy?
Just on the transportation, I understand when we're talking about 50% of the students who are going, and then, you know, half of that on any day, you're now down to 25% of the students or families. But with so many, I think we'd see an increase in the number of people who are dropping off. Have we been looking at our protocols? And I'm partially asking this in case my wife is watching.
Yes. So the answer is absolutely. We partnered with the police department about four or five weeks ago. And I did not remember his name, Kerski? Nope, can't remember. The police officer went, met with building principals and Tom Halleck to be sure that we had, Smith is one of our big concerns, Lincoln Slate is another one of our big concerns. So they, they're on notice, too. Not only did we create a traffic flow for the excess cars, but also a police presence at Smith and at Lincoln Slate, because James Jones took a job, right, somewhere else? And we've all seen James Jones outside every morning directing traffic. So yes, we were on that. All those meetings have already happened. Nick?
And just to follow up, do we have any idea how this is going to impact our transportation numbers between the fewer number of students we anticipate needing busing, but the addition of needing more, you know, trying to space students out?
So the one thing I will say, then I'm going to turn it over to Kevin, numbers man. But the one thing I will say is, Tom Halleck is, his routing is to pick up most kids every day, right? Because to try to do Cohort A, Cohort B, and switch and have all these different routings, we have one that basically says we're picking up all kids. The bus driver will drive by that space. If a kid is not there, they continue to the next, right? As far as daycare goes, too, we're trying to stagger the timing of the daycare, either before school starts or after, to avoid that excess cars, because on remote days, we are not providing transportation for families. It's only on their cohort days that we'll provide it. In terms of anticipated additional costs, Kevin, you're up.
Yes, so basically what we're doing, Nick, is we're actually...
Could you talk louder, Kevin?
We're actually running transportation as if we have...
Full.
Full, full school. So before we had a bus of 40 or 50 kids, we're still running that transportation routes every day for those 40 or 50 students. We do know that there may only be 10 or 15 kids. So on these large buses, we are running a full route, which in some ways is great because for just precaution, the kids, they shouldn't be together as much. So we're not changing it, we're just running the full buses. And we also realize we have bus kids on the buses, and that's a good sign because, you know, they'll need distance reach.
Thank you. Nancy, you had your hand up?
I just needed your, you had mentioned your percentage of remote and hybrid, and then I heard you say homeschooling as well? And did you say not CSD, you know, now...
Yeah, you mean actual homeschooling, not...
Yes, homeschooling in terms of withdrawing their child from CSDMB.
And what was that percent?
The actual, exact percentage is 1.32% based on the responses. About 50% of families returned on the survey.
So we're at like 5,000?
Just under 5,000, yep.
And again, that's, that would be the most kids coming to the party on any given day. But parents might opt to say, I'm only going to do one day out of two, or this week I don't want to. And remember, too, we're really encouraging our families to do the health checks at home and to keep their children home if it's sniffles, even if they're not sure if it's allergies or not, let them stay home, they can learn remotely. Yep.
So you don't, we don't know about 5,000 students what they're doing?
Say that again. We don't know?
Out of the 10,000, we only have 5,000 that have responded, right?
That said yes or that responded?
That responded.
That responded.
So we still have 5,000 students, we don't know what they're doing?
Right. Right. But we're assuming they're coming.
Yeah.
That's what we're assuming. And that's why for transportation and everything, we said we're not changing it, because what, we can't keep changing it. We have to have something that's constant. So we're assuming every day 50%. Monday, Tuesday, 50%. Thursday, Friday, 50%.
Change is constant.
Sure. It is. That's the only thing that we can be sure of, right?
Yep.
So that pretty much wraps up, up...
I thought I saw Ms. Leia put something into chat.
Oh, I can check that out.
She can't hear board members, she said.
Oh. I can't hear board members in the hall. Diane, is there something that you, that you want to have repeated?
Sorry, no. I'm just saying, if you're way out back there, it's very hard to hear you.
Okay.
I have my closed captioning on.
Uh huh.
However, it doesn't always type up exactly what the person must be saying.
Okay. So that concludes my superintendent report. And again, I'm available always, email, text, always. I kudos to my staff, all of them, every, from every, every department. They're all working really, really hard to make sure that we open successfully and that our kids have a safe year. And I will keep you posted on our numbers and as far as health and facilities go within the coming days.
So we have any committee reports?
Nothing from policy.
Nothing from finance? Nothing from curriculum?
Okay. And there will be some personnel matters? Okay, how about board reports?
Just really quick, like super kudos for graduation. Like I know myself, Meryl, there was a bunch of us that went and however they did it, put it together, I think it went off without a hitch. The kids' faces, like I could get choked up just thinking about their faces when they're coming across the stage. Some of them try not to smile because they're just trying to be bad.
Right.
But man, it, I thought it was phenomenal. Absolutely phenomenal.
Yeah, and that's kudos to the high school staff, let me tell you, all of them. They all, I mean, they worked...
The video, like everything.
Ended a meeting every week, I think, since March to, and you know, it looked effortless, but there was thousands of man-hours behind it to get that done.
Oh, yeah.
Agreed.
Any other board reports? Okay, let's move to old business, policy.
Motion that the board approve revised policy 4118.51, use of social media. And it will need a second because it was postponed, and so now it's the board bringing it up.
Second?
So we have a second motion. Is there a discussion? There is no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Motion carries? Okay, on to the consent agenda. We have on here minutes of two meetings and a, and accepting the personnel transactions.
Just a question, if anyone wants to...
Anybody want to take anything off the consent agenda? All right. In that case, the consent agenda is approved. Let's move on to new business. And the first item is a proposal to create a new job description, manager of security.
Make a motion to approve the new job description for manager of security.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion of this amendments, what do you want to do?
So just based on personnel, that we just, we just saw the job description, there's just a recommendation to maybe make some amendments to this job description to add some of the things from the monitor, the security monitor.
Correct.
Because that seemed to be lacking. If that was going to be their main focus was the cameras, that part of the job description is missing from the manager of security. Off the top of my head, I don't have it because I can't do dual screen to bring them both up, but...
I'm trying to get it up here for you. Are you saying this person would do the work of the monitor? This, so this is new and in place of...
What used to be the security monitor?
Yep. So they're replacing the security monitor with a security manager, having more responsibility, but their main responsibility would be those cameras, and that whole piece of the job description is missing.
Okay.
So, and I mean, it's pretty intricate work, it seems like, from the description.
And is this, this position is currently empty?
It's a new position. Right. So this is just... Retirement at the end of September.
Oh, she's retiring at the end of September.
Correct. And so we want to make sure we post and we're able to get applicants in and interview prior to their ending.
So this has not been posted yet?
Correct.
With a different description?
That's correct.
Okay, so the new candidates will see the updated?
Correct.
Okay.
So actually, we didn't have a, to your point, it's a new job description, not actually a new position. It's both, right? It's, we're asking to approve a job description, a new job description and a new position.
But eliminating the old one.
We're eliminating the current position.
So maybe that's like really quick, too. So they're going to eliminate the security monitor and the stipulated position from the security guards. There's a stipulated position to do kind of like the scheduling and all that stuff. So that will go away.
Okay.
Because that's where they'll get all the money.
This person will do all of that?
Yep.
And be a little bit higher up position.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Can't get them both to come up. And I don't want to, like, I don't want to... I'm finding it now. If you'd like me to, you can take my computer. Take out your hand wipes.
Thank you.
You can use my screen. Oh, you don't have your...
Do you want to?
No, I've just been pulling it up. Just scroll down to find that and what, what...
You'll see, I think you'll see what I'm talking about.
She wants to use some of the language from the current position that's... She wants to use some of the language from the current position, that, that skillset of whatever, how you do...
The security monitor.
Right.
Right.
Close it. I'm trying to find the page where you're to add...
Which email was it in, our, not the side packet?
No, I believe it was right in the board packet. Am I correct?
Yes.
Right, it was in the packet?
Yeah, I thought it was in the main one, so...
Personnel packet. Yeah. Personnel?
Yeah.
That would be why, okay. Can you get that?
No, because I don't want to rifle through your email.
You can answer it first while you're on it. Ah ha, there it is. Oh, you got it? You want to scroll, like, the right uncover?
Yeah, I think, yeah, because I did, I did, um, peruse them before.
Are you talking about the first couple under essential performance responsibilities?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I would like to make a motion to amend the manager's, uh, try to write terminology, to amend the manager of security posi, job description under the heading of... Sorry.
Yes.
Security manager.
It's hard to go back and forth.
Under the heading of the essential, uh, essential performance responsibilities to add the items, first, scans, monitor, screens for events that might be potential problems, relaying information to security employees and directing them to potential problem areas. Next, scans from camera to camera using specific ring lists provided for various time slots during the day. And locates and retrieves digital computer files for use by school officials, police officers, and prints visual documents as required.
Do you, do you think that makes sense? If that's going to be their major job?
One second.
Oh, sorry, second.
Okay, so we have a second. Any discussion of that amendment?
Do you feel like that makes sense? If that's going to be their major role, as it was described in personnel?
Yeah.
That they would be taking over Irene's responsibilities, that that should be in the job description?
Right, Irene's responsibilities should be in there, and the new stuff?
And the new stuff.
That makes it a higher position, yes.
Right, okay.
I, I also think it's, um, appropriate to have it in there with the understanding from my, from what I heard in the personnel committee, that they're going to be training others to also have those...
Right.
That knowledge that, but if they're going to be training others to do it, they need to know how to do it themselves.
Right, right.
And so we did talk about, you know, loosely, eighty percent will be that day-to-day functioning as the current employee is doing now, but to build redundancy and to train all security, and it creates that talent pipeline for people for the next, uh, person who would like to apply for that position.
Okay.
So do we think that the other two essential performance responsibilities under that security monitor are not important enough to add as well? We added the top, the first three, did not the bottom two.
Ability to describe orally and reading security problems?
No, under essential, the other two...
Oh, essential, okay.
Program and changes, access functions.
Now, if I remember correctly, if I go back to the manager of security, that is part of it? Responds to security-related incidents at schools involving staff, students, and parents, performs other related duties as assigned by the director of facilities.
So that's enough to cover.
Oh, programs and changes, access functions, do we have that? Because that's the badges, right? She did the badges.
Yes, that would be a continued responsibility.
Yeah, maybe just take all of essential.
All of those essential.
Right. So Kristen, did you get that, to take all essential?
So...
It's a motion.
Well, so there's a motion to amend, have to make a motion to amend the amendment to include the last two bullet items as well, which says programs and changes access functions for various employee needs in order to support security monitor system and selects and reviews detailed floor plan maps on computer and adjusts cameras from position to position to view specific trouble areas and coordinates via radio to security employees.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
First, it's the vote on the amendment to the amendment.
Okay, so, we will vote on the amendment to the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now that we have approved the amendment, now let's...
To the amendment.
No, we've approved the amendment to the amendment, we can vote on the amendment.
Correct.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we have an amended motion, we can vote on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
I think aye, yes, aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries, we're approving that position to position.
The position with the, with the...
Or the job description.
Job description.
Okay. And then we have, we approve the job description for the A technology assistants. Nancy, do you want to...
I'm gonna, if you're okay, I'm gonna have Jeff Prokop. Um, if you could come on and explain the need for these positions during this school year?
Hi again, everyone, absolutely superintendent. Um, so in terms of these technology assistant positions, this is, um, similar to the role that we've seen at the high school. And as a, you know, the changes this year are really putting a stress on everyone's ability to be able to have, um, you know, that capacity technology speaking-wise, uh, the position choice here was to try and improve that by, um, basically building a coverage between where our techs currently are computer repair specialists, they cover, uh, two buildings each. This would, these positions would also cover those same two buildings and basically in essence work as a team in that concept. Um, knowing that, uh, adding of positions can be costly, this is all related to the CARES Act funding, and so as presented, it would be with that understanding that it's with, uh, secured funding for one year.
Was there a motion to bring this forward?
Oh, that's a good point.
Motion to approve the reva, is job description for a technology assistant for the, uh, for a technology assistant for the district?
Second.
So there we have a seconded motion.
Yes.
Any discussion on this?
So I, I always had, when, when things are grant-funded, they always give me that little tickle, right? Because this is eight positions funded by a grant for one year, but they are part of a union. Correct? So how do you not fund, how do you not have the employees stay if they are part of a union?
If we eli...
So if you eliminate a position, they just get eliminated?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, and they, they have a, they have a skillset, I mean, it's that job title, tech assistant.
Right, so that is, okay.
And depending on the union, they might have bumping rights or other protections within the union?
Yeah, okay, right.
But eliminating a position, you're not obligated to hold a position?
Oh, right.
Unless there's specific language in the union contract.
I didn't know that. You know, now that we've talked about it, it, right, okay.
I just had a question, this is a twelve-month position?
Uh, Jeff, I, I, that I don't have, no, thank you, yes.
Yep, that is a twelve-month position with the idea that they could be extremely helpful over summertime, um, even in between.
Okay.
Tony Kane has a question.
Uh, thank you, just looking at the essential performance responsibilities, um, a lot of them are not necessarily computer-related, not related to the increase in one-to-one or the implementation of one-to-one devices, it's more taking care of a lot of the day-to-day things that maybe would fall through the cracks otherwise because there's so many other responsibilities now on top of our staff, if I understand correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep?
Could I, could I add, it's a little more than that though, in terms of what you would see from, say, our tech support, uh, the same position at the high school. Um, they do, uh, you know, in the case of that position, a lot of work in relation to the projectors as well as the general setups within those computers. So even if they're not actually fixing, say, those one-to-ones, they're going to become hard, hardware experts on the AV realm as well as, um, have that capacity on the software side, if that better describes it.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion on this item?
I think they're going to be very busy.
Yeah, so too. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any extentions? Motion carries. All right, so let's move on to the next one, which is a new position, be, uh, one time, one FTE behavior support assistant for the Brooklyn High Key Program?
Uh, no.
I think you missed one.
What am I missing? Oh, yes, I missed the community liaison, attendance liaison.
Uh, motion to approve a new job description for community attendance liaison.
Can somebody just give a little background, just because we didn't get to this one in personnel?
Sure. Um, I'm going to ask Terry Turcot, she can speak to that, um, it's actually a grant-funded position, but she'll speak to it. And, and also we have our new school readiness liaison too, so Terry, I don't know where I'm looking, but Terry, I know you're there.
I was looking up there for it, I'm looking at myself.
Is Terry still on mute?
You might be on mute, Terry? Or Chris, I'm going to ask if Terry...
I'm here, I'm here. So this position is a community attendance liaison, um, who will provide support and assistance to the community preschool programs. And our hope is that through that, the attendance through the community and our program with preschool students will increase. Um, this position in the past has, um, been filled and the person that was working in this position made phone calls home to parents if we noticed that some students were becoming chronically absent and they were not coming to school. Um, the person would go out to the home and see if there was some kind of support that we could provide to families and find out what the root cause of why the child was not coming to school. We made phone calls home to families, um, you know, sometimes it was just, something we found that it was just maybe transportation or families didn't know that they had to be out waiting for at a certain time and they just kept missing the bus. So there were some easy fixes. Um, our hope is that starting at preschool, we'll develop some habits for parents and for students at an early age so that students are coming to school on a regular basis and they learn those good habits at an early age. It is a ten-month position at nineteen point five hours a week. Um, and it also allows some communication between the community programs as well. So for example, the person will be working in HRA and the Y, and we're able to communicate about some of our futures coming in for kindergarten. Um, we can see if they have had some attendance problems, we can flag them and give them a call before kindergarten as well, you know, just to say, you know, we, we just want to make sure that, you know, this child's coming to school every day, how can we help you? And just reach out and make some of those relationships, inform some of those relationships early on.
Terry, can you talk about the grant that was written for it?
Sure, so we wrote a grant, um, Chris, who is the new preschool liaison, has, um, has written a grant. And Chris, I don't know if you want to chime in as well to talk about some of the information, that was, that was written recently?
Sure, um, so it was written by Megan Adams, my predecessor, but, um, the grant is, um, based on chronic absenteeism, and so it's looking at, um, school readiness, community programs, the board of education, and really defining, um, specific reasons as to why, um, we have chronic absenteeism and how we might be able to build that gap. And so, um, this community attendance liaison is one of those steps that we're doing in order to really work with the community as well as our district program to get on the same page. We have, um, paid for Power School, which will, um, help us track attendance the same way that we do with the district, um, and that way we can do reporting across several of the district programs in hopes, like Terry said, to, um, really understand the key issues and really be a gap, or to bridge that gap rather. Um, we're also looking, um, at some assessment, um, being put into that, we see in Power School, and that'll help some reporting across the community as well. Uh, but we really just want them coming to our best, um, when they get to the district. We want them coming to kindergarten ready, and if we can control that from, uh, the district offices, then we're, we're far ahead of that. So that's the gist of, of the grant.
Thank you, Chris, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So who is the grantor? Who, who did we...
Who is the grantor, Terry or Chris? Who is, who, who is the agency that's giving us...
Sure, um, it's, it's through, um, the Fund for Greater Harvard.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I seem to recall that this is similar to what was done in the past.
It is, this is like a re-up, I know that Megan had written it, we, we did have a person in place, but yes.
All right, further discussions on this item? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. A? Uh, I'd like to have a motion to add an item to the agenda that relates to what we just addressed. There was a new position request that I believe, uh, was supposed to be included that didn't get processed in time. Um, so I'd like to make a motion to add, uh, to the agenda, a new position request for the community attendance liaison at the Roosevelt Early Learning Center.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Just looking for the same thing.
Okay. There are no discussion on that? We need to vote to add it to the agenda first.
Okay.
So, all in favor of adding this to the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. And, uh, now let's vote on the motion.
Motion to approve the new position request for a community attendance liaison at Roosevelt Early Learning Center.
Second.
Now have a seconded motion, any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now let's go on to item D.
Uh, motion to approve a new position request for one full-time equivalent behavior support assistant for the Newbridge High School Key Program.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this item?
I just have a quick question, and it's probably a simple answer. So the estimated cost is forty-eight thousand minus budget amount for para. What, I'm missing something, I'm not making a connection to what that means. Like, are we getting rid of a para or taking half a para? Let me, I'm going to have Danielle, um, speak to it.
Donna Clark is here, uh, standing in for Danielle, I can speak to that.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome. Um, yes, you are correct, um, the, one of the para positions for that key classroom is being eliminated and we are going to, um, put a BSA position in that place.
Okay. Just for the needs of the students in the classroom?
Yeah, yeah, so the, um, the three in that classroom is that they have, um, uh, four paras assigned to the key classroom, which is for the students with significant autism. We're, we're finding that when this reaches the high school, um, given their, you know, physical growth, um, you know, they become stronger and tougher and there's been a need, um, for somebody trained in de-escalation strategies and applied behavior analysis to be able to manage these students. Um, the security officers have been called in from time to time and it's just, it's, it's not fair to them because they're not trained, um, in those techniques, and we just feel that it would be, serve the students better to have a, a behavioral support assistant in the classroom that can be proactive in terms of, um, you know, the students, uh, you know, require some strategies and... in place before they, their behavior escalates.
And that's what the BSAs do over a para, correct? Okay.
Yes, yep, they're specifically trained in safety care, which is a program that we have specifically for students with autism, for de-escalation techniques. They're also trained in applied behavioral analysis techniques as well to help with those students.
Thank you.
Any further questions on this? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anybody else have other businesses related by law?
I believe there was also, I'd like to motion to add an item to the agenda. There was a new position request that came through late for a, sorry, for a district-wide instructional coach. So, I'd like to motion to add an item to the agenda, new position request for a instructional coach district-wide.
Second.
I'm going to explain, and actually you have it live in person in the back, it's Mike Foran. You have to talk to Mike, Mike's going to explain it.
Okay, we need to vote to add it to the agenda first.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so, all in favor of adding this to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to approve a new position request for a instructional coach district-wide. Now, that's on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, moved in seconded, all in favor?
Discussion.
Discussion, okay, yes, right, discussion first.
So, so this position is, actually, both middle schools are going to end up with three coaches. Some are at advanced coaches. Originally, we thought we'd have two at advanced coaches and one district coach in each building. Because of some challenges with hiring, we've ended up with or decided to add a second district coach at Slay funded 75% through Commissioner's Network Grant, 25% through school improvement grant. We recognize that the Commissioner's Network Grant would not fund full-time positions and that fund is diminishing. When we met with the state, state recently, we asked if we could cover the other percentage through the school improvement grants, which are also dedicated to those schools, among other schools. So, so it's really just a shifting of a position from at advanced to the district with the funding still coming through those two grants, the Commissioner's Network Grant and the Slay Grant. Both Slay and Palowski will have three coaches because of the way it worked out. Slay left two district coaches and one at advanced coach. Palowski left two at advanced in one district.
What is their role, what do they do?
They're going to support the implementation of the new curriculum. So, they're going to, our, we have to teach differently to implement the new curriculum. So, so that's, that's their role over the three years of the grant. Our goal is to build capacity within the district so that, so that we won't need three coaches in each building, we'll be back to one potentially, which is what the district has traditionally served. So, so ensuring the implementation of the new curriculum is really essential. We're spending a lot of time and money on a new curriculum. We want to make sure that we, that curriculum will require a different, our instructional strategy and we want to make sure that we're supporting teachers as they, as they grow and learn to teach differently.
So, it's really just grant-funded versus at advanced? That's the major difference?
All people hired understand that it is a time limit, right? No different than what we talked. So, we're very upfront in our interviews with this too, I just want you to know that because you just can't assume all these positions when grants are over. Now, the one thing with our grants, we are guaranteed usually school improvement grant dollars. So, it might be extended beyond the three years on a grant-funded position, it might be. But if the grant goes away, the position goes away as well.
And Commissioner's Network potentially can get a fourth this year. We did get a fourth year at the high school, I think, as you know. So, we were able to maintain or continue some network input.
And I have to say, we're really excited, the curriculum, as it's, as it's being developed, it's a beautiful thing. And it's a shift, it's a shift for teachers, right? When we talk about engagement and being culturally responsive. So, we want to make sure that on the ground, there are people in place that can help with that. Our focus this year for all of our teachers is around planning Domain Two of the CCT because it's going to be a year, and, you know, for many teachers, I don't care how long you've been in it, it's going to be a different kind of year. So, you know, being able to provide them with an additional 360 minutes a week of planning time, et cetera, having their building leader with them during planning and their coaches and then, you know, implementing the curriculum. We feel, you know, minus COVID, we feel really good about the work we're doing.
So, just to clarify, this is not in addition to the coaches that at advanced was going to provide? It's like in place of one of them?
Correct. The Commissioner's Network Grants for each school had three coaches. It didn't necessarily, we didn't have to say where they were coming from, so we, because we, while we put our budget in this year, now we just made that shift in, in Slay's budget.
Okay, so at advanced is not getting that money anymore because it's not going through them?
Correct, and that lines...
It's coming all the way back to us?
That's the district to pay for that.
Okay, and then the district will do their own hiring of someone that's fit for
Correct.
the population, et cetera.
Yep.
Any further questions or... All right. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Is there any other business?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? All right.
Thank you, everyone.